Okay, welcome. I'm Tim Skagans, Chair of the Shasberry Select Board, and I'm calling this meeting to order at 6:31 on Monday, October 5th, 2020. First item of business is to check with each of the selectmen and see if anyone has a conflict of interest this evening. Art?
No.
Ken?
No.
Tony?
No.
Joe? Tim does not.
No. You want to start recording? Tim?
Thank you. That's my favorite thing to forget. Okay, minutes. Do we circulate minutes, Dave? I think I posted some, but I don't remember if they went to everybody else. Dave Kirn?
I have his break out.
That's got to know, can there warrant minutes in this package?
Okay. Then we have warrants. I have, it looks like a couple of warrants. The first one is payroll warrant number seven for $22,694.56. Well, check out. By Art. Any discussion on the payroll?
Tim, just correction on that. You have to go down to the bottom left. The actual amount is $22,416.39.
Okay, without objection, the amount of the warrant for the motion is $22,416.39.
No problem.
Okay. All in favor of approving the payroll warrant, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstaining? So payroll warrant number seven, $22,416.39 has approved. Five zero zero. Next I have check warrant number 12,
I move.
Motion to approve from Tony.
Second by you.
Second by Art. Major items on this one include $1,000 to Aflac, $2,800 to the Bennington County Sheriff, $2,100 to Bennington Tire Corporation, $1,000 to Tire Corporation, $800 to Business Card Services, which I believe is miscellaneous credit card.
Yeah, the biggest item on that was $600 for another SNE field for the election.
$2,400 to Cartographic Technologies, which is the web GIS support. $4,800 to the Frame Group. That's on the, uh, the Water Works, uh, water replacement. Yeah, water main replacement. Anything specific that happened during this pay period?
Uh, during this period, they had done the test drilling, soil samples, and checking out the, uh, where they're going to lay out the pipeline.
Okay, several to Green Mountain Power, including $900. $8,600 to Howard P. Fairfield, Inc.
That's a partial rent on the mower.
$3,900 and $4,400 to Innovative Surface Solutions.
That's the chloride.
2,000 to Morris Repair.
That was getting the trackless ready for winter. Just bringing it up to speed again.
$8,800 to Sullivan Powers for the audit. $2,100 to Sycamore Landscaping for the Timber Landscaping Services. $66,000 to US Bank. This be a payment for...
That's the garage fund. This is full end interest on that.
Those are the major items. Any more discussion on check warrant number 12? All in favor of approving check warrant number 12, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? So check warrant number 12, $121,179.64 has approved, five zero zero. Do we have any announcements?
Um, I think it's, uh, people are asking about Halloween. I think we just want to reiterate again that we have, have hired the sheriffs to control traffic, but we don't have the power to shut it down unless the governor tells us to. So, we have traffic under, under control as much as, as we have in the past.
The government is not, uh, the state government is not taking a stance on whether or not to do Halloween, and neither are we, but we will provide traffic control should there be, should there be trick or treaters. Uh, I would remind everyone that the upcoming election will not be here, held at the firehouse. As is tradition, uh, we have moved the election to in-person voting to the Newtown Garage on North Road to allow us more room to spread out and, uh, observe proper, proper social distancing. Along with that, we urge, encourage everyone to vote mail-in or absentee. I believe just about everybody should have their ballots by now from the state. You can fill those out, mail them in, or you can deliver them to Cole Hall. Uh, Dave, do we have our new box yet for putting those in?
Yes, there, there's a box for the town clerk right outside the clerk's door on the lower level.
Is it inside the building?
No, it is outside the building.
Okay, very good. Okay. Let's move on. I, uh, I'm, yeah, okay. First off, uh, any public comments? We welcome public comments at the beginning and ending of our meetings now.
Tim, I have a procedural question.
Tom and Art.
Thanks, Tim. Um, I noticed on the agenda you have Agenda Item Number Eight, Planning Commission Appointment. As the Chair, would you, would you require comments be held until that Agenda Item comes up? Or can people make, uh, uh, comments about the appointee at this point in time?
I would prefer that you make them when that item comes up.
All right, I'll do so. Thanks, Tim.
I would also note, and I should have noted this at the start, that, um, we had intended to have on the agenda tonight the appointment of Ted Haberfield to the DRB. We discussed his appointment in executive session at the end of our previous meeting. We all agreed that, uh, we would appoint him, and, uh, just in the back and forth, uh, that got left off the agenda. So without objection, I would place that in the agenda right before the Planning Commission Appointment. Hearing no objection, the agenda is so altered. Any other public comments? David Durfee.
Hi, uh, Tim. Good evening, everyone. I, I just wanted to pass along some positive feedback that I've gotten as I've been talking with people around town over the past few weeks, and I'll say first of all that a couple of years ago, when I was first campaigning, and I would ask for input and feedback, I did hear quite a lot about the condition of the town roads. And I would explain that that was not my, or the state's bailiwick, but that I would pass that information along, and I think I did. And, and this year I've had several people say to me how improved the town roads are. And probably it comes as no surprise to any of you, and I've seen it myself firsthand driving around, but I just wanted to, to pass out along to, to Mike and Dave and the Select Board. And I told folks that I would do that, so I'm following up.
Good, thank you. I'd like to take total credit for that because, uh, I, uh, I was instrumental in hiring David Kirn, and David was instrumental in hiring Mike. And, uh, Mike has done a great job. And so you can thank me for all of that.
I, well, next time somebody says something, I will give you the credit.
Yes, no, seriously, Mike has done a great job. I have mentioned that to him several times, that, uh, the roads are in the best shape that I've seen in, in my 10 years here in town, and, and we certainly appreciate that. Other public comments? Okay, that takes us to Treasures Report with Melanie Dexter.
Everybody, I'm trying to, there we go. There it is. Do you have my reports there, Tim, or whoever's driving? We look at the cash flow first. While you're pulling it up, I'll, I'll just talk sort of, uh, about, about tax bills, of course. Oh, there we go. We'll talk about this first then. Um, so that's closing out September. There's a lot of, lot of stuff going back and forth because of the purchase of that, um, of that fire truck. So you see great big numbers, but it's, it's, it's viewer, we've already discussed it, and you sort of see it coming both in and out. The important number to look at there is taxes received. You can see there was almost $600,000 in, um, in September. They're, they're coming in nicely. It's running just very slightly behind last year, but I'm not, um, alarmed about that because actually the bills went out a little bit later this year than last year. So I think we're in pretty good shape, as far as you can tell. And let's see, go down to the bottom. Let's see. Yeah, so the, the budget is looking fairly similar. The revenues are actually, but that's just because the taxes went up a little bit. So that's why the revenues look so high. But so the expenditures are running behind where they were last year. So, uh, that's, that, that could be wiped out quickly, but that's, that's, uh, nice to see. We're holding, holding the, um, holding the reins as usual on expenditures. So nothing to be alarmed by there. I also, I took a look at, uh, where we are as of today. The percentage of taxes received to date is almost exactly 11%. I don't have a curve. I don't know whether that's good or bad, but, um, as I said, they seem to be coming in pretty similarly to last year. So as long as that continues, we're not going to have any, I hope, not any, um, concerns about taxes coming in. Uh, if you want to take a look at the reserve account spreadsheet, there's not much going on there either. I'll just tell you, the main thing you're going to see is that, that fire truck I keep talking about. And we did already discuss that in another meeting, so I don't know if you're, if it's worth waiting for. Okay, here we go. Yeah, you see that fire truck there and the 230 line? That's, that's the money going out for, for that fire truck. So, so we're seeing a, a lot less money in the reserve account, uh, bottom line than we have in a long time, but that's just because we've been, accumulating the money to buy that truck for a long time, and, and, uh, so nothing, nothing to be worried about there. Everything's completely normal. Not a lot going on in water right now because the new bills will be going out in about a month. So this is just the, just the final payments coming from that, that last bill that went out a few months ago. Yep. The only other thing I wanted to talk about, unless, do you have any questions about either of those reports? If not, then I just wanted to talk very briefly about taxes again. We're trying, as I've said a few times, trying to discourage, uh, in-person payments as much as we possibly can. If you leave a self-addressed stamped envelope and just drop it in my, uh, box, I will get it back to you the same day. Or if you mail it to me, if you need a receipt, just include a, a self-addressed stamped envelope in that, and I'll get those back to you. There's really, there shouldn't be any need to, uh, interact with me, and it's for everybody's safety that we keep that to the barest minimum. A lot of people are used to doing it the old way, and they're, they're having me come out with the, my, my stamp outside, but it's, it's really not necessary, and, and for everybody's safety, I'd, I'd rather keep that to a minimum. Any questions about any of that? Okay, that's all I've got.
Very good. Thank you, Melanie.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, next item up, according to our adjusted schedule, is an appointment to the DRB. Ted Haberfield is here. Uh, we discussed him, as I said, last week. I am looking for a motion to appoint Ted Haberfield to the DRB.
I move.
Second, Tony, second by Art, discussion. We did interview him last night, uh, last, uh, last meeting, I should say, and, uh, had a good discussion. Uh, we all agreed he would make a good addition to the board. That gets the DRB to five members, does it not, Tom?
Uh, that is correct, yes.
Okay, so, uh, as I have been saying in the announcements at the beginning, we, uh, we are looking for people for the Senate Commission DRB. We're getting, uh, we're getting there. We've got, uh, the five members we need for the DRB. The DRB likes to have two alternates because, uh, things come up on the DRB that are time-sensitive. And, uh, it's always good to have extra people there so that when someone's coming through with a business application that's time-sensitive, or a building application, that they can, uh, that we can respond to them even if we have, uh, some members unavailable. So, uh, there's still room to, to volunteer. So if you'd like to serve on the DRB, we, we invite you to do that. And, uh, in, uh, the next, uh, part, we will be talking about, uh, appointment to the Planning Commission. So, uh, any other discussion on the appointment of Ted Haberfield? All in favor of appointing Ted Haberfield to the Development, Development Review Board? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstaining? Okay, so Ted, you are appointed to the Developmental Review Board by a vote of five zero zero. Welcome aboard, and thank you for raising your hand to serve.
Thank you. Thanks, Ted. Thank you.
Very good.
Looking forward to it.
All right, uh, item, uh, eight, or it's probably nine now if I had renumbered things. Martha Cornwell has raised her hand to, um, serve on the Planning Commission. They have been operating at four members for a while. And so Martha, welcome.
Thanks. Happy to be here.
Very good, very good. I would invite you to, uh, tell us a little bit about yourself.
Sure.
If you would like to be on the Planning Commission.
Sure. Uh, my name is Martha Cornwell. Um, I have grown up in this town. I went to Shasberry Elementary School. Went away, uh, to go to college and medical school and have come back to the area to practice family medicine. And, um, doing Alzheimer's research as well. I feel very strongly about Shasberry and have moved back to the area and, um, feel like the community really supported me. They helped, um, provide scholarships for my, and medical education and other things, and felt like this was a very good way to give back, um, all of the effort and support of all the community members. I feel like I have, uh, a lot of interesting perspectives. I think as a younger person, I bring kind of that to the table as well as, um, critical thinking that I've gained from being in the medical profession and the ability to be empathetic and a good listener, and, um, hope that those things will be helpful in, um, being a member of the Planning Commission.
Any questions from, uh, members of the Select Board for Martha?
I guess I, I just have a comment. I just, I just hope that, uh, we can bring a balance between economic development and the idea of what everybody thinks Shasberry should look like. Little rural from our town, but, uh, we desperately need economic development to keep, services to the people and that sort of stuff. So I just ask you to keep an open mind, uh, to things like that.
Yeah, certainly, I think, um, you know, being a member of any of the boards of, of, of our town, it's kind of a balance between the kind of private interests and, and businesses and, and, you know, what we think is kind of best collectively for our communities. So certainly as a working person here, I work three jobs. I also work at Clearbrook and Wing and a Prayer Farm, which are both businesses here in Shasberry. I, I definitely understand the need to keep that in mind when we're planning for the future of our, of our town.
Okay, uh, public comments, uh, on the topic of, uh, Martha Cornwell being appointed to the Planning Commission. Tom, I believe you were, uh, first in line there.
Uh, thanks, Tim. I appreciate that. Thanks for recognizing me. Yeah, I've known Martha since my wife and I moved to town, and, uh, I just want to say a few words in support of her appointment to, to the Planning Commission. As Martha's already mentioned, she's a longtime resident of, of Shasberry. She's also touched on very briefly, she's an extremely hardworking individual, working at Clearbrook, Wing and a Prayer Farm, she worked at the Northshire Bookstore. She's recently licensed as a, as a physician's assistant with, which in itself is quite an accomplishment. It's an extremely difficult, uh, curriculum, and she's, has successfully completed that. And the way I look at Martha is Martha has what I call, and I stole this phrase, so I don't take any credit for it. She really has what they call the caring gene i- in her. Obviously, being a physician's assistant, she is going to have a, a, just a plethora of transferable skills that are going to be, in my opinion, an asset to the Planning Commission. And Martha has touched on some of these, uh, briefly. She's very empathetic. She has to be empathetic in, in being a physician's assistant, again, listening to patients, understanding their perspective, and I can see on the Planning Commission, when you're working in a group and you want to gain consensus, I think that's one of the major skills that one must, must provide and, and have as an asset. Um, the other thing, and Martha touched on this also, uh, being a good listener, I think that's paramount when, when, uh, dealing with any one of these boards or being on one of these boards. We are public service. We must listen to the public, and we must listen to state statute, and we must listen to a lot of avenues. And all this must be taken into consideration in performing these tasks on these, uh, town boards. The other thing, what, uh, that wasn't mentioned is attention to detail. I believe that's, that's critical. Now, being in the medical profession and you're dealing with patients, again, attention to detail is just an everyday occurrence, I believe, and that, that's just a great asset. Finally, interpersonal skills. She has to work with physicians, with nurses, with patients, with a lot of different people, pharmacists. She's been carrying the same thing on the Planning Commission. And again, I think that, you know, is critical. I think Martha has those, and she's going to leverage those abilities very well. I think she's going to be a major asset to the Planning Commission. So in conclusion, I'm just asking the Select Board to vote in the positive regarding the appointment of this candidate. And I yield my time. Thank you, Tim.
Thank you, Tom. Other public comments on this subject? Naomi Miller.
Thanks, Tim. I'll be, I'll be quick. I have the benefit of knowing Martha because she lives, um, directly around the corner from me, and we see each other on the road all the time. And, um, as a member of the Planet Commission myself, I am very acutely attuned, as Art mentioned before, about how it's really important to keep economic development in the front of our minds in that, in that function where, that we serve on that commission. And my impression, um, from talking to Martha is that she has, she didn't mention this at all, but I think if we got her talking about it, you, your minds would, would be blown away by how much she has to say and how committed she is to the economic development of this town. She has ideas, sort of bursting out of her head, um, that come from a lifetime of being in this town and of working in this town. So I feel very confident, Art, that she will bring to the table a lot of the things that we're all, um, she will bring. And I will say thank you for listening, and I support Martha's candidacy.
Thank you, Naomi. Jerry?
Thanks, Tim. I would also like to support Martha's candidacy. I've known Martha since I moved up here and became active in our community group. And she has always been there in the background, helping to support the community group. She feels strongly about Shasberry and cares very much about the future of the town. I've seen her at Clearbrook when she's working with people. She is great with people. She has great interpersonal skills, and I can see her bringing those to bear on the Planning Commission, and when she's dealing with people that are concerned about the town but don't necessarily agree with way things might be going, I think she will be able to handle that really well. So I, I don't know a lot about her ideas for the town, but I know she cares very much about it, and I really would support having her there. I think she would be an asset to the group.
Any others? Thank you, Jerry. Um, okay, so this is, um, the interview portion that we like to do, uh, before we, uh, deliberate, which, uh, points out that I have made another mistake in the agenda. Uh, it is customary for us to plan an executive session at the end of the meeting to, uh, discuss appointments. Would the board like to take that opportunity at the end of the meeting to go into executive session to discuss the appointment of Martha Cornwell to the Planning Commission?
Tim, I make the motion if it's, uh, that we do go on executive session at the end. I think it's only fair. This is the way we do it for everybody else, and I think we should be consistent.
So without objection, the schedule is adjusted to add, uh, executive session for the described purpose, uh, right before adjournment. So hearing no objection, the schedule is so altered. All right. Thank you, Martha.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thanks, Jerry, Tom, Naomi.
We appreciate your offer to serve. So that takes us to the DPW report. That normally is handled by Dave, but I see we have our rock star road foreman here. Mike, you're not it. Mike, are you being talked tonight?
Um, I can.
Go right ahead.
So the, the first thing that I'd like to talk about, Tim, is I wanted to let you know that all the trucks have had the tarps installed. The, the last truck is all done. It just needs to be picked up. And we, uh, brought the trucks over to a facility in New Hampshire that Art Whitman told me about last year, and they did really nice work. So all of our load covers on all of our trucks that we talked about last year are now installed. I just wanted to let you know that that's done.
Good, thank you.
Just, uh, another thing is we'll be switching gears from working out onto the roads probably about next week to getting our trucks ready for winter, putting the plow frames back on. Just making sure everything is all ready to go for when winter does hit. We got a couple of projects to finish up. Little bit on East Road, up by Karen Mellinger's, and a driveway culvert issue on Trumbull Hill that's been, oh, should have been replaced a while ago, but that's something we'll be working on, and, uh, got a few roads left to go. got a few roads left to grade and then we'll be done with that. But that's pretty much it for what we'll be doing for work, just regular maintenance. What's on the agenda about the roadside mower is I I would like to purchase a mower to mow our road road sides within our right of way. Just so that we can maintain the brush problem, we can keep our right of ways mowed back, we can keep our intersections mowed back and we can just keep all that brush and all the hard work that we've done on keeping the brush down in-house. I just feel that it'd be way more effective and just will will help us out in the long run if we start mowing ourselves. So that's where we get to the proposed purchase of the roadside mower. Talking with the guys, we have a rental right now and it is a rented tractor and it has a mid-mount boom mower, so the mower is mounted in the middle of the tractor, so when the operator is running the tractor, all of his um, vision and everything is right to the side of him. So the the way I would like to purchase one is with a mid-mount boom mower. And I would go with a twenty-two foot rotary head mower with um, interchangeable heads for future, maybe to put a flail on it or um, another type of mulcher. Going with the mid-mount mower, we're still able to use the three-point hitch on the back of the tractor. So um, if it ever needed, we had to get an attachment to use the tractor, um, we can use off the three-point hitch, we could get a sweeper. The company that I got a quote from for the mid-mount mower makes a berm desk and what it is is it's these big discs, it's probably like eight feet long and it's got all these discs and it's on an angle and it mounts on the back of the tractor on the three-point hitch and that would pull in all the nasty berms and stuff that the graders leave and just re um, cultivates your sides of your roads, so there's there's all kinds of attachments out there for the tractor. I mainly want to use this thing to mow the road sides and I would really like to at least mow three times a year. That's, that's what I'm thinking. I'm not sure if you guys have any questions or thoughts or anything I'm missing.
We uh, we talked about this a good bit in our last meeting. Uh, I was the last one to become convinced that uh, we should move from renting to mowing, but uh, I was convinced by the discussion that we can uh, we can pay for it in payments that just about equal our uh, our rental payments on on the mower right now and uh, David found a way for us to uh, to to pay for the essentially the down payment with the surplus from the the fire truck that we're selling uh, in in replacing with the new one, so. Dave, do you have anything more to say on the on the financing of the the mower?
Yeah, one thing we'll need to do tonight, and the big change from this week to the prior meeting is uh, going to the side mount because the original had the proposition of the bucket with the mower actually behind where the guys would have to crank around to look at it, which none of them really wanted to be doing. Uh, the finances for this, what I want to do is the treasurer's department, the state treasurer's department, the Vermont Municipal Equipment Loan Fund uh, will provide up to a hundred and ten thousand dollars at two percent interest over five years, which comes out to about twenty-four thousand dollars a year. Right now, our rentals are running twenty-six thousand dollars a year. So we will start essentially saving lots of money after uh, the sixth year of this, taking into account the money we're gonna have to put out front from the unassigned fund balance. Uh, so there's no doubt that it saves money if you look at it that way, the maintenance will never equal the twenty-six thousand we're paying for rental in twenty-twenty, which is going to be obviously a lot higher when we pay off this loan in twenty-twenty-five. So what I'd like to do is uh, the board approves this is get this in, it's due by the fifteenth. They will review it and there's no guarantee we're gonna get the money. It's a pool, everyone applies, we have geographic uh, uh, benefits because not many in the last couple of years gone to this corner of the state. So if we get the hundred and ten thousand from them, we would have to take about fifty-eight thousand uh, which would come from the unassigned fund balance. Uh, we which has just gone up right now. Uh, we've put in with the sale of the fire truck, the sale of the other assorted old equipment, if you notice outside of Coal Hall, all those trucks are gone. So we put in about a hundred and sixteen thousand in equipment sales. Uh, we budgeted revenue for that line at thirty thousand. So we're quite a bit ahead, but just for for clarity, we're also last year, we dug into the unassigned fund balance uh, a good deal. When Melanie mentioned earlier that our expenses are behind from last year, uh, that was mainly because we were working on every single road that could be found. And I just wanted that to go forward, so we did get into the unassigned fund balance so that we wouldn't have to put the brakes on the crew, and I think that just shows in the roads. So we are lower than what is approved for the fund balance, but we still have, after we put the down payment on this, we're still gonna have ninety thousand in the unassigned fund balance at the end of the year. And that's probably gonna be higher because uh, we are on a a very watchful basis of everything this year. Uh, because the funding for next year isn't exactly sure either at this point.
So sorry, uh, how much of the hundred and sixty-two thousand are we borrowing and how much are we downpaying?
Well, I'm hoping, well, the max the state will give with this loan, uh, the Vermont Municipal Equipment Loan is a hundred and ten thousand. So we will be putting in uh, what was the balance on that? Like sixty thousand to purchase this. And this would just be, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, but this would just be with the mower uh, and the tractor itself, the tractor is about a hundred and two thousand and the uh, the mower head uh, is about fifty-eight thousand.
Yeah, that's right. Number I saw here is a hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Well, we're not gonna get that part.
That that would be with additional uh, flail head.
I I don't dispute that you need the board, like, uh, I would be, I'm in favor of that. I did a little research on the internet today. If you buy a machine at that value, the first year you lose between twenty and forty percent value of the machine. I would like to see you uh, try to slightly use one, and you you, we we get it out of push to a hundred thousand dollars to buy it.
I've I've been looking for a used one for, I don't know, two years now. I'm I'm always looking for used equipment and everything that's out there, what I've seen from those mowers are just hammered. There's it's like towns just go out and destroy them or something.
Ken, I'll give you a counter for that. Uh, when I was on the select board in Sunderland, we bought a used mower for Sunderland. It's still running, but it had a lot of mileage. Now, if we buy this new, we're looking at a twenty-year-plus tractor that will be saving us upward of twenty-six, thirty thousand dollars a year by the seventh year in rental fees. So I think over the lifespan of this thing, we're talking about substantial savings, whereas if we buy a used one, we are gonna be repairing it more and we're gonna wind up buying two of those, if not three.
No, I understand that, Dave, but I mean, it's it's like a pickup truck. In five years, you lose eighty percent of the value of the truck and and they're not so bad with equipment, but uh, I bought a ten-year-old excavator, I had it for twelve years and I I was a hundred thousand dollars cheaper to buy it ten years old. I mean, I realize I didn't use it, maybe it's heavy, some people do, but uh, when I got on the board, we had a million dollars in leased equipment. I don't want to head back that way again.
Okay, make a comment? Yeah, um, one of the critical things about roadside mower is the transmission. You have to have a transmission that um, that is can be stopped and stopped and started easily or smoothly and all that sort of stuff. Also, I think Mike will tell you that the John Deere we're renting, that that transmission doesn't fit the mower because it actually goes too fast or riding the clutch all the time and that sort of stuff. Mike has done a lot of work in researching this and the international that he's at that he's looking at has the what we consider the perfect transmission for this. If you get a, if you get an old uh, or a used one that doesn't have this transmission, I don't think you will find anybody that would sell one once they bought one of these. You you just aren't buying a a machine that'll do the job.
And that question what the machine is, it's just, I I really averse to to leasing, not leasing, but buying it, get back where we were when I got on the board. I don't like to do what Mike's doing.
How many hours can you typically get out of a ma- machine like that?
So I'd, I think you could get ten thousand plus on that, fifteen thousand. I, our our grader is, I don't know, uh, what did I say it was, Dave? Eleven years old and it's got fifty-five hundred hours on it already. I mean, and that's still in really good shape. And what Ken was saying about the mower, I don't believe that tractor's gonna depreciate that bad. I believe the mower attachment depreciates right off the bat, but those tractors hold their value. Yeah, and I know they do, I've looked them up.
And that question is that, I just, I don't like getting into loans again. I have that question, what you saying, Mike?
I'm not disagreeing with you there, too. I don't want to see the town go into debt. David's done a good job getting everything straightened up. And I just want, I'm just looking at more versatile for us, um, paying uh, Hosley to mow, he's retiring, so we're gonna have to find something else anyways and then renting that machine, Fairfield's, they're the only one around here, so they keep driving their price up every year. So it's just gonna get more and more expensive to rent every year. Why don't we take that money like David was saying and put it towards the loan? So that's where I'm at.
Uh, if we could buy a piece of used equipment that has low hours, like you were saying, that that other kind of supports Ken's argument that we should get a used one. Um, if it has low hours and it's in excellent condition, like you were saying about the other, uh, what was it, five thousand hours on it or something?
But finding one is the problem.
And you're right, yeah.
That transmission, that CVT transmission that they just did for roadside mowers, it came out like three years ago, so that's fairly expensive. If you're gonna you're gonna go spend ninety grand on a used tractor that's three years old with no warranty, why not spend another ten, fifteen thousand, have a tractor that's warranted for six plus years, you know, and some of those warranties that they offer right now are really good, too.
What's a warranty on that one, Mike?
Uh, depends on what we want, but I told him I wanted a five, what did we say the loan was? Five or six?
Hundred and sixty-two thousand.
Five years.
Five years. I told him a five-year warranty. I'm pretty sure that's what I said.
That's drive train, drive train warranty?
What's that?
That's the drive train warranty?
Yeah, it it goes by five years and can't remember the hour number when he said.
How many hours?
Five-year, five thousand hours, something like that. Um, but that tractor that I'm looking at is pretty, that transmission's uh, the setup to have.
I don't question that, Mike. I, I'm not frightened of following what you're saying.
And I've looked for a used one. I've been looking for a while and there's just everything you see out there, either the mower is just destroyed and the tractors, or it's the other way around, the tractor is destroyed and the mower is in good shape. I don't know, I don't think buying a used tractor is is the right thing to do.
Well, it's, I don't mean like the guy here.
I know you don't need that, but.
And Ken, I appreciate what you're saying and and this is the first purchase and I would pretty much would plan out to be the last one that's outside of our long-term capital plan. Everything else from the fire truck to the dump truck that's coming in a few months is all paid for in cash.
Oh, yeah, yeah, as as my understanding, we've got it all set for the next foreseeable.
Yeah, well, I originally charted it out for thirty years, so the grader he's talking about, we already gonna have money to pay for. But this is kind of an exceptional case where we were looking at staying inside hot, leasing one of these for the seasons and it's just uh, not panning out. Their prices have gone up, well, this year, one, it's gone up two thousand in one year.
Yeah, no, I know what they've tried to achieve that, and I know what I can say.
The the other part, the depreciation, if it was something that uh, like when we look at a fire truck, we just sold the fire truck, so we want to replace those because they have a high resale value if you move it along right. This tractor, I expect to take out of service when the wheels fall off it in about twenty years or so. So the depreciation isn't isn't that large a factor upfront. Thing you replace, you replace it when it's done.
Is 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 the warranty on that, is that, is that something we have to buy to, or is that coming along with the with the purchase?
That comes along with the purchase. There's a, there's other warranties that you can buy, but I don't really ever get into that extended warranty. If that's something you guys want me to look into, I can, but I don't buy them myself, so I didn't really look into the extended warranty.
Mike, would you uh, tell me again what rotary and flail heads are and what they do?
So a flail head is more type mowing for a town that had a lot of grass highways, you know, um, the like the medians and the, where you got good mowing. And then the rotary mower will do um, grass and brush and you know, small diameter trees.
Roll tree.
A bush hog.
Yeah, like a big bush hog. Fifty-inch bush hog on on the side mower. But a a flail is more for doing grass and stuff like that, not heavy brush.
So don't we pretty much need the rotary to?
Yeah, that's the one that I would purchase, would be the rotary, but if we keep up on some of this, we do have a few roads that you could mow with a flail. Now, by mowing ourselves and regularly and doing it two to three times a year, you could use a flail on a few roads in this town, so. And then having the interchangeable heads, so if we did purchase a flail five years from now, that um, that would take some wear and tear off the rotary and we would switch to using the flail on the roads that we get away with it. But there are some roads that you would never use a flail on, there's too much rock and trees.
Okay, so you're not recommending that we buy the flail now?
Unless you want to buy both of them and have them all in one, yes, but if you want to save some money, no, we can wait.
Or we go with a used one and then get the two pieces of equipment new. We go with it. Joe, you're not gonna find a used one. Anyway, it's worth a try.
So right now, we're looking to buy the tractor with the boom mower and the rotary head.
Correct.
What's the uh, what's the dollar figure for that?
A hundred and sixty-two, three hundred and eighty.
All right.
All right, just for clarity here, tonight, uh, we're seeking approval from the board because I'm on a tight deadline to apply for this grant from the treasurer's department. Uh, the actual bidding for the tractor will be put together and be put out. This is, this is our estimate and we can, we can get the bid a- and we'll meet it, but we're not actually, the board won't vote to actually purchase this tractor tonight. Because there's no point, because we, right now, we don't have the money. And if we get turned by, down by the uh, treasurer's department, uh, the state treasury will be looking at another funding source. But at two percent over five years, it's less than what we're renting now, paying for rent.
So what do you, what do you need, Dave? Do you need just a a approval to keep going ahead? Is that what you're after?
Yeah, basically, I don't want to submit any paperwork to the state unless the board has approved.
Do you need a motion, Tim?
Yeah, I think we need a motion to allow Dave to uh, apply for a grant to help pay for the mower tractor.
A loan.
A a loan? Yes, okay, right, right, okay. So we need approval to uh, apply for a loan for the mower tractor of uh, for a hundred and ten thousand dollars.
So move.
Moved by Art.
Back to.
Second by Tony. Any more discussion? All in favor of approval, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? So that motion is approved five zero zero, so Dave, you may apply for the loan, a hundred and ten thousand dollars to pay for the mower tractor.
Okay, thank you, and Joe, I heard your question, uh, there aren't any grants, uh, for equipment that I'm aware of at this time out there.
Awesome, okay. Thanks.
Uh, the next thing was the municipal road, uh. Grants and aid program, not municipal roads, the grants and aid program. Uh, I sent to the board, uh, a signature sheet. That needs to be approved, we've been designated for twenty-one thousand five hundred dollars. With a five thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollar match, which we'll do in kind, Mike already has the location picked out. And we'll do the work in the spring, but Tim, you have a sign, uh, form, I sent over to you that, uh. Need the board to approve your signature, and we'll get that in, it's due on October thirtieth.
So move.
Back it.
Okay, we have a motion from Art seconded by Ken to approve the municipal roads grant and aids program. Uh, Dave, sorry, sorry, I'm gonna have to ask you to repeat yourself and tell me what it is we're, uh, we're doing with this.
Uh, there's a signature page there that, uh, the chair has to sign. To be submitted to the state, that, so they know that we are gonna go forward with the project. This will be for twenty-one thousand five hundred dollars will be the, uh, base offer, we could get more in the long run. And we'll do the match with, uh, Art's time, uh, the road crew's time working on the project.
And which project is this?
Uh, I believe we're gonna do West Mountain this time by the orchard.
Yeah. We've got, um, uh, project drawn up through that section that we would like to do there. And it's hydrologically connected, so it falls into the category of that grant.
And this is a project to, um. Get water away from the roads, no doubt.
Drainage, underdrained pillows. Yeah, all drainage.
Okay. Any other discussion? Uh, all in favor of signing the letter to, and of intent to participate in the municipal grant roads. Roads, municipal roads grant innate program. For the purpose of, uh, acquiring a twenty-one thousand five hundred dollar grant to improve drainage on West Mountain. Say aye.
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 All of, any opposed? Any abstaining? So that motion is approved five zero zero. Okay, any other business with the roads?
Yeah, I do, um, we've done such a good job with the roads that. I feel that speeding has now become a problem, so I think we, uh, I would ask Dave to. Direct the sheriffs to spend a little more time on back roads, it's, it's pretty serious all of a sudden.
Oh, okay.
Wh- wh- wherever the road is straight, it, they've done such a good job that. I'm sure they're going forty to fifty miles an hour on some straight stretches.
I'll, I'll send a message to the sheriff.
Please.
And, and let them know that Potter Montgomery isn't the one that they need to be sitting on, because that's where they like to sit.
All right.
I just wanted to let you know.
Okay.
Not sure why, but that's where I see him sitting, right at that house, right in the middle, the old house.
Okay, yeah, no, not a big speed problem on Potter. Okay.
You know, he can probably catch somebody on colder road almost any day.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And somebody in Cleveland Avenue, too.
Yeah, that's true.
I'll let them know.
And just, uh, as a general announcement to the citizenry, we would, uh, we would all appreciate. Uh, people observing the speed limit on the roads. Certainly, if you see people walking on the roads, uh, if you ha- haven't walked on a dirt road when a car goes by. Uh, it's really nice if the car will slow down to just about a crawl, because even going thirty-five past, uh, somebody walking their dog on the road. You can kick up gravel and dust and, and all of that. And if you keep your, uh, your speed, uh, at thirty-five or below, the dust is a lot less of a problem. Uh, for the people who live close to the road. Uh, and we've had a lot of dry weather lately, and the dust can get to be. Uh, quite bothersome for the people who, who live close to the road, but if you keep your speed down, that dust is a lot less of a problem. All right. Uh, nothing else on roads, then?
Unless you guys have any other questions, I'm, I'm good.
All right, thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Matt.
Other business, Dave, you're gonna des- describe the very exciting prospect of tearing down the old garage.
Yeah, uh, as you remember, last, last week or last meeting, uh, the board approved my putting out a bid. Um, but then we were approached by, uh. Um, auction, uh, no, I can't.
Auction International.
Thank you, Auctions International, that they actually have placed buildings like this on their sites. And have gotten people to bid for them, so that we would have a zero cost in getting rid of the building. So I thought it was worth, you know, I like to, uh, make a profit, so I thought it was worthwhile to delay putting out a bid. So that we could post this on Auction International and see if someone will bid on it, and, uh, take it away at their expense, and. Even if we make five hundred dollars, who cares, we're getting rid of a building for ba- essentially free. Um, the gentleman came, he wrote up a description and a proposed proposal for the bid site. Uh, I found it lacking in, in many areas mostly in, uh. Protecting the town's interest, so I sent it to our attorney this morning. Who did a quick turnaround, just put in a lot of things that will protect the town, obviously. Uh, we're gonna have to vet whoever is the high bidder to make sure that they have the wherewithal to do this correctly. But the language we've added in, which I forwarded, uh, put on the Dropbox earlier this afternoon, because I didn't get it till this afternoon. Uh, makes it a, a little beefier and a lot more protective of the town's interest in this. The Auctions International is pretty much low bit, it's yours, and with very few qualifiers to it, so this one has a little bit more. So I think, uh, I'd like to put it on Auctions International, would be on with a finish date by the end of the calendar year. Preferably, preferably by November thirtieth, and, uh. The auction would only be like two weeks long, people apparently are on this thing, and, and if they're interested, they, they go for it right away. And just see if we can. Get it taken away for free, uh, people have asked before, uh, about interest in it. But I know some of them just don't have the real ability to take this down in any timely fashion. So, uh, the basic idea is we'll just put it out in two weeks, see who comes, looks at it, who wants to sign the papers, and, uh. They'll take it away for free. And if not, then we'll put it out to bid, nothing's lost, but in a couple of weeks. But I thought it was worthwhile for the chance of, you know, like I said, moving it for free. We wouldn't, we would remove the slab later, that, that's the only difference. Uh, we would remove the slab, which is okay, because we can jackhammer that whenever we want. You know, maybe next spring or, you know, during the winter when nothing's going on. Uh, but, uh, it just seemed like a better, better way of going about this.
Sounds good to me.
Okay. And the salt shed is on there too, because I always connect the two, but the crew's taking the salt shed down. Just when it's something to do on a day when, uh, after the trucks get ready for winter, whatever. You know, it's just something to come do, we don't need to hire someone to do that. But the garage, uh, like I said, just wanna make sure that. You know, everything is done, and that whoever starts the job, they could face real penalties if they don't have a job done in time. So, uh, I think we'll set, we'll see what happens. Instead of, we'll either make five hundred dollars or we'll be back to bidding again. So I'd rather make five hundred dollars and have a gallon.
Okay, so without objection, uh, we will allow Dave to proceed with auctioning. The demolition of the garage with Auctions International. Um. Including the, um, protection provisions provided by the attorney into the contract. Okay?
Okay, very good. Uh, the next thing would be, uh, a custodial contract, as, as you may or may not be aware, our custodian, uh. Uh, resigned and moved to California, and, uh, we need a new service here. I've been speaking with a local business, uh, EFX, which is actually right up the road here on Buckhill Road. Uh, they do the barracks, they do dailies, uh, so they have a lot of references. Uh, they've made a proposal that would be coming, that's, I believe it was sixty-two forty for the year. That's about twelve hundred dollars more than what we had budgeted for our own staff person to do, to do that. Uh, their price of sixty-two forty also includes all cleaning elements, all bags, all. All the equipment they would need to clean the building, so it's not that much higher than what we were paying our staff person. Uh, when you add in the supplies we were buying for her. So, um, I don't know if you've had a chance to, to look at the contract I put out, uh, in the Dropbox, but. Uh, it's a service we definitely need, and we definitely need during this time, because we are kind of under our obligation to. Clean certain areas of the building, uh, frequently, and that also includes, uh, the, uh. Uh, shop, not the shop area, she's not gonna clean the shop, uh, the, uh, lunchroom and the facilities over at the garage. The office spaces.
Also, they would be cleaning coal hall and the office spaces at the, uh, at the garage?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, which our previous cleaning service was not doing.
Yeah, yes, she was, we, uh, we're actively paying her to do that also.
Oh, okay, didn't realize that, okay. Um, the contract, uh. Looks to be good, uh, it specifies, uh, in a spreadsheet what, uh, will be cleaned when. And, uh. Uh, I trust Dave has, uh, done, done due diligence as this, uh, with this, do we have a motion to? Um. Accept, uh, the bid from EFX Cleaning Services for cleaning. Um, coal hall and office space at the town garage for sixty-two forty per year.
So moved.
Moved by Ken.
Second.
Seconded by Art. Discussion. All in favor of approving, uh, hiring EFX Cleaning Services to clean the garage and, uh, garage office space at Coal Hall, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstaining? So that motion is approved five zero zero.
Yeah, thank you, and that's all I have for this evening.
Any other business?
Yeah, did I understand Melanie to say that water bills will be going out again, or shortly, or sometime?
Beginning of November is normal.
I think we've gotta have a water board meeting before that to discuss what we're, how we're gonna, what we're gonna send out for bills.
Um. That's a good idea, can we schedule a water board meeting before our, um, meeting on the nineteenth?
I'll put it in. Make it five thirty?
Yeah.
Any other business?
I, I think, I, I think we should have our lawyer be available at that meeting too, Tim.
Okay. All right, reviewing action items, uh. Uh, besides the one we just mentioned, scheduling. For, uh. For the water board on the nineteenth. I just, uh, after the start of the meeting, gave myself a little nudge to look into, uh. Making sure that we can have two hosts on, uh, these meetings, we seem to get, got, have gotten through it okay tonight, but it's. Always a good idea to, uh. To be able to assign a second host in case I, uh, I go down. Um. Do people have an opinion, and I would invite, uh, members of the public to, who are still here to. Indicate if they like, like Zoom or go-to meeting better, we've kind of been going through a trial period here at Coal Hall.
I would say I've noticed no difference, I've been doing cemetery meetings, rec meetings, these meetings. Uh. I mean, I don't see much of a difference in the platforms.
Gary?
Tim, I, I, I mean, I haven't been doing Zoom or go-to meetings except recently with the town's activity. And to me, they both seem kind of the same, so I'm easily getting to one as opposed to the other, so whichever way you decide goes, fine by me.
Okay, well, well. I'll think about it some more, I've had several people resp- uh, talk to me through email, who say they like Zoom a lot better. To me, they're, they're essentially the same. I'll give it some more thought. Okay, uh, in that case, I'm looking for a motion to go into executive session to discuss. All the appointment of Martha Cornwell through the planning commission.
Before you do that, we, we talked about, uh, sh- uh, having the sheriff patrol different areas more. Don't, please put that on action items.
Thank you. Did we ever get, uh, the sheriff onto Cleveland Avenue, we, uh, I know Joe has asked for that a couple of times.
Yeah, he has been, and I reviewed their, uh, daily sheets. Uh, they do move around quite a bit, different areas. Uh. Cleveland Avenue from, from, you know, personal and professional experience. Is a very difficult road to do effective speed enforcement on. Because you basically turn on the road, and unless you have a non-standard unmarked car, you kind of stick out like a sore thumb. So it doesn't take much to hit your brakes.
More than welcome to use my driveway.
I'll let them know that.
Yeah.
Very good.
And Tim, this is Cat TV, if you could give us fifteen seconds before you go to executive session to mute your audio and go to our standby screen. Okay, thank you. You can do that now.